All right, guys, welcome to a special election edition of Meet Victoria. This is going to be a meet your candidates thing where today we're very blessed to have District Three City Council incumbent Jeff Bocknight with us today. And so, we're very grateful, we're going to pick his brain on a few issues, see where he stands, and see what his continuing vision is for the city of Victoria. Before we get started, though, I want to thank Victoria Communication Services, VCS. Guys, if you don't know the Harmins, if you don't know VCS, you need to. They're all over this community, they back just about every event in this town, they support just about every event in this town. Make sure you get over and support them. And the good thing about it is when you get there, you're not reaching and stretching to have to find something you like with these guys. They're just awesome, and their team is awesome, their staff is awesome, and they will take amazing care of you. So, thank you to VCS for hosting all of these candidate interviews, all of these special election additions, we're very grateful to them. Go check them out, thank you, VCS. On that note, Mr. Bocknight, thank you so much for joining us. What in the world makes you decide? Well, before I get to that, tell me a little bit about, for those of us who've lived under a rock or hadn't been paying attention, tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right, well, thanks for having me, Caleb, I really appreciate it. Opportunity to sit here with you today and just visit.
Yes, sir.
So, I moved to Victoria when I was just about three years old. Dad opened his practice here, and went through all the public schools, played basketball for Mike Smith, still consider him a friend. He was, you know, now the East Girls Golf Coach.
Okay.
And my daughter played golf for West, so I always got to see them at tournaments, and it was always a joy to.
Who won the most? Your daughter, Derek, did they?
It was neck and neck, a couple of years with East and West. East had, historically, had a better team, but West kind of came along.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, so it was fun. And then, I left and went to college, got a Bachelor's of Science in Mechanical Engineering, and then a Master's of Engineering in Mechanical Engineering from Texas A&amp;M.
Yep.
And then, went to work in San Antonio designing mechanical electrical plumbing systems for an engineering firm. Then, I never wanted to leave Texas, and my friend worked for Intel Corporation, and Intel was going to build a new fab in Fort Worth. I was like, okay, well, it's a stretch, it's north of I-10, so it's going to be different. But I moved up there to Fort Worth with Intel, and six months later, I was living in, outside of Portland, Oregon, which was very interesting. Then we moved to Arizona, over to New Mexico for a while, then we went to Ireland for a year and a half. And it was in Ireland that we were sitting around, I was like, you know what? I think I've proven to myself that I can do whatever I want. I've got wife, one baby, another one on the way, living in a foreign country. You know, I felt confident enough that if I came back to Victoria, I knew who I was.
Yes, sir.
And so, we started deciding, are we going to, you know, do our own business? Want to go work for somebody else and just do global construction? And we chose to move back home closer to family. Started Crossroads Mechanical in 2004, bought a business in Woodsboro, Texas, and converted it from residential AC to commercial AC, and moved it to Victoria. And so, since 2004, we've been here in Victoria. My wife, Jay Lynn, and two daughters, Emily and Abby. Abby's a junior at West now, plays tennis. And my daughter is at University of Arkansas as a freshman.
Got it.
My wife went to the University of Arkansas, that's why. And I couldn't, you know, talk her into Texas A&amp;M, but.
You tried, I'm sure.
I tried, oh, you bet.
Yes, sir. Well, what in the world makes you decide, from, you know, having what sounds like a very successful private life, and enjoying life, and having the whole family stuff? What makes you decide, hey, I want to go run for city council? That's a bit of a jump.
Well, the politics bug kind of bit me in high school. I did a fundraiser for Max Sweeney when he ran for Congress, and I was one of the parking attendants, and Ronnie Millsap came to town and played for him, it was, you know, fun thing. And then in college, I had the opportunity to go intern for Greg Loughlin in Washington, DC as a US Congressman. And really enjoyed it up there. I was amazed that Washington, DC is really run by people 40 years and younger. And that's, you know, the congressmen typically go make a speech, but I even wrote a speech at 20 years old for the congressman to read on the floor of the House.
Wow.
So, I really enjoyed that. Always looked for opportunities to get involved, you know, Texas A&amp;M, Ducks Unlimited was kind of faltering, so I got involved and became the chapter president, because I like to get out and duck hunt. And then, I didn't have as much opportunity when I was with Intel, because I'd be at a place a year or so. So, there wasn't much community involvement. I realized that was kind of missing in my life, I enjoyed it. I moved back to town, I joined the Symphony Board, became their treasurer, joined Rotary, got to know people, you know, people that had known me as a kid, now got to see them as adults. And so, that was all fun. I can't remember what other boards, I started with the, in the city on the Building Standards and Commission, Building Standards and Code Enforcement, or something like that.
Yeah, I think.
But started on that one, and then Paul Palaschek had said, hey, you know, we're going to have openings for Planning Commission, I think your background would lend yourselves well to that committee. So, I joined the Planning Commission, and stayed on there long enough to become the chairman of the commission. And that time, Paul was stepping in to run for mayor, had to give up his seat when he ran against Mayor Armstrong. And he said, hey, this is open if you, you know, want to think about it. And so, I threw my name out there, and we had a three-way race that I won without a runoff, which I was proud of.
Yes, sir. What year was that?
2013.
Got it, got it.
And then, I think I've, I've run two other times, so that was a two-year term, I've run two other times, and had an opponent one of the times, I think, and the other one was unopposed, the last one.
Got you.
But, it's just always something, I guess my parents kind of instilled on, you know, giving back and service to the community. So, I've found that I really, really enjoy being on city council. I don't like to be one that stands on the sideline and complains about something without jumping in and making it better.
Yes, sir.
And so, for that purpose, I really enjoy being on council, being able to be there to make some decisions that I feel are correct.
What do you think the greatest, now that you've been on council, what was the greatest swap in, oh, I thought it was this, and then I got here and I learned something today, it's not like what I thought. What was the kind of the greatest, oh, moment that you've had so far in serving?
Well, when you first get on, it's like drinking out of a fire hose.
Can imagine.
There's so much information that you got to take in, the budget process is very involved, which I was happy about. I've combed through it looking for, where's the fat? I know it's in here, I know it's in here, but I haven't been able to really find any, anything that needs to be trimmed. Biggest eye-opener is some of the city staff on how much they care. Gilbert Reina, I'm always praising him, he's our financial lead, finance director, and he's got a great conservative approach to fiscal management that I really appreciate. Another eye-opener is, I wish that we were able to invest, like our general fund that we keep in reserves, we make like 1%, 1.5% on it, because the government limits what we can make with it. I'm just thinking, man, we're missing so much potential out there. And I realize it's public funds, and you don't want to put too much risk on it, but man, if we could get a 5% or 6% rate of return, stay ahead of inflation, it'd be nice. But, we're not allowed to do that, so that was kind of an eye-opener. It's things like that that come up, not as routine as they used to to me, but when I was starting, I was like, why don't we do it this way? And, you know, all the reasons were valid, and I, you know, ferreted them out to make sure that I was getting told what was the truth.
Yes, sir. So, kind of along those lines, what is, you know, what is the greatest misunderstanding between kind of the public's perception of city council and what you guys do, and the actual truth and reality of it? And I'll, I'll use a couple of examples, is, is one, you know, I see sometimes in the comments section on a city council post, or something about, you know, well, they all just, you know, they all get these huge paychecks to be on city council, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, the Navarro median, everybody, not everybody, but a lot of people are mad at you guys over the Navarro median, and that's not you guys. And so, are you guys all getting rich serving on city council? Are you all getting these huge paychecks every month?
No, not at all. I think it might total somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 at the end of the year.
Got it.
But.
Definitely on an hourly rate, you're losing.
I participate in the health insurance program.
Yes, sir.
And they actually draft out of my account every month to serve on city council, because what I get doesn't even pay my portion of the health insurance.
Good. So, for all those out there wondering, they are not just sitting there cashing big fat paychecks to serve on city council, it just doesn't happen.
It is very much service to your community and volunteerism at its best. I think the mayor gets $3,000, and I think we're further down.
Right, okay. They, so, what's different about you guys in a city council race is, just about everywhere else, everybody kind of runs under the Republican or Democrat banner, or Independent, or whatever political affiliation they have. City council doesn't do that, you guys kind of run as individuals. What's weird to me, though, is we still end up facing the same issues that we do on a state ticket, on a national ticket. It almost always trickles down to the local level, which I argue is the most important. And, you know, city council is kind of weird in the sense that you vote on people that you know, that you're friends with, and you vote for them for those reasons, because you don't know their political affiliations or ideologies and how they line up. And then someone gets in there and they surprise you, and they vote complete opposite of what you thought you were electing. And, you know, I would argue Victoria is about a 60% roughly conservative city, and it feels like a lot of our boards, you know, from Chamber to EDC to School Board, et cetera, feel like they're made up of more left-leaning than right-leaning people. And so, I kind of want to pick your brain a little bit on your ideology, you know, you don't have to come out and just straight tell me, hey, I'm a conservative Republican, or I'm a, you know, far-left liberal, any of those type of things. But I kind of want to pick your brain a little bit. And so, for example, do you believe in a smaller lean and mean type of government, or a growing government, you know, that continues to take in more tax dollars to better help the people, and grow to help and help the people, or are you more of a smaller government type of guy?
Well, as a businessman, I'm all for the smaller government. Government, get out of the way, let me do my business.
Yes, sir.
I've taken those online tests for where do you fall in the political spectrum, and I'm half-conservative, half-libertarian.
Got it.
I fall out there every time, I'll, you know, do it every couple of years to make sure, you know, am I still standing in the same way? Is it, are my views changing? Because I'm always curious on how it comes across. But, that's, I mean, basically where I am, I'm very fiscally conservative, and then the libertarian side is government, get away.
I like to say I'm a libertarian-infused conservative, you know, and so I certainly understand.
Now, that being said, though, like on the national level, state level, I don't like it when government gets involved in a bunch of social issues, as far as, I don't care if it's a right-leaning or left-leaning.
Could not agree more.
That's the libertarian side of me, says, just quit.
Get out of it.
Quit telling us how to think, what to think, and how to act, you know, let us make our own decisions, we're free, we're supposed to be free men.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, get out of the way, government, quit doing it.
I could not agree more.
And so, I bash, you know, the right, the right wing of the Republican Party for the same stuff that I will bash the left wing of the Democrat Party for, because I don't think it has a place in our government.
Well, I think consistency is important, and that's fair, you know, and I can, I can live with that all day long.
One other thing you did talk about was impact that we can have locally versus state or nationally. And I'm in total agreement, local is the best place to make an impact on someone's life. It's where you live, it's where you work, kids go to school, where you drive your car mostly, and I think it has, it's very important that people pay attention or involve locally, because you're going to have direct access to everybody that's making decisions.
Yes, sir.
And it's a lot easier to converse with them, disagree with them, but you're still going to see them in the community, so it's a respectful disagreement and conversation, because we all live together.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. No, I totally agree with that point, and that's one of the things that I like, is the availability of local politics, where we can disagree, but I can go at least ask you, like, hey, where were you coming from with this? And you may point out something that says, oh crap, I didn't even think about that, you're right, you know, and when you seek truth and all of that, the local politics can take on a new meaning, because you can go meet these people and talk to them. And so, I agree, and you made a good point, is you have to live with them also, and that's why I don't like the, you know, I commend all you guys that run for office, because you put yourself out there, and it's, you know, nowadays it's gotten to where we can't just disagree with a vote you made, or, oh, you're a terrible person, and, you know, how dare you do this? And I, I don't like that, I don't like the ugliness of it, and so, especially at the local level. So, I agree with you 100% there. My next question, you actually kind of hit, I was going to, I asked you, I was going to ask you about the city budget, and ask if there was areas of pork, or just anything that you feel that could be leaned up to reduce the burden on taxpayers.
Well, here's, here's the interesting part on the taxes, right? We have a police and fire department, right, of course, considered both of them very important to the city of Victoria. Our property taxes don't even pay for those two departments combined. So, just about half, not just a little bit less, of our property tax for the general fund, or property tax funds, half of the general fund. The rest has to come from sales tax, and some other fees that we receive from other entities. But, if our property taxes don't even pay for police and fire, I have a hard time saying that there's a bunch of fat in there that I can't find. You know, we've done, we do roads, we do, you know, all the utilities are on enterprise funds, which I don't know if you're familiar with those, but they're fantastically managed, they're set up like many businesses that don't make a profit, but they keep back money for capital improvements, and, you know, for a balance in their fund of 25%. And that's how the water rates are set. So, that's why I don't see a big fluctuation in water rates, because they do a good job managing it, and know how much it costs to produce water and deliver water, and that's, that's why we get our rate, same with sanitation and the sewer rates, all those are enterprise funds. So, the general fund, I struggle on finding it, I mean, there's some, there's some things that I would like to increase, I would like to increase, we need some more police officers. So, how do I do that if property taxes aren't even paying for half? And so, we search and try and change how we're doing things, improve technology, so we don't maybe have as many employees in one area, and make some efficiencies that way as well.
What, you know, mentioning sales tax and property taxes, you know, what are your thoughts on, you know, and I know this is not something you can do in your local race right now, but kind of figuring out your ideology, what are your thoughts on a consumption tax versus property taxes? Because me personally, I would like to, you know, I think property owners carry a lot on their back of having to fund the cities, et cetera, fund, you know, and, you know, you guys get half of what, like, VISD does, you're not even the biggest taxing entity, even though you guys catch a lot of the heat on stuff. Why not have, you know, push towards something like a consumption tax where, one, people aren't in threat of losing their homes if they can't pay their taxes, but, but two, you spread, if somebody chooses not to go buy something that day, their money is still theirs, and it's there in their pocket. But if they, everybody pays, to me, contributes equally under a sales tax, and I, I hear the, well, it's not progressive in nature, and, you know, and it hurts, but they don't have to go buy something, you know, nobody is forcing them to go buy anything, and I just, I've been an advocate for a consumption tax, it's one I can hold my nose for, I shouldn't say I want one, but it's, I can hold that, you know, versus, I don't like property taxes, I think it's theft, I think it's, you know, I hate that, you know, I'm paying thousands of dollars to VISD every year, and I don't have a kid in there, and it continues to go up, and I'm told to just give up a cup of coffee every month, or whatever it is. What are you, what's your thoughts on a consumption tax versus a property taxes?
I think statewide, it'd be, it's going to be difficult, right? We already pay, what is it, a penny per city, half a cent to county on sales tax, and half a cent to sales tax development corporation. So, we're allowed 2 cents on top of the 6 and 1/4 that the state charges. And we've seen a problem with sales tax because of internet sales. Hopefully, there's a, there's a bill in the House right now that allows it to be charged where it's purchased, not where it's shipped from, which is, you know, big detriment to New Braunstalls, who has Best Buy warehouse there, and they get, you know, $20 million in sales tax revenue every year. But it should help at least send more money to the local localities that have lost sales tax revenue. And so, it's very, and sales tax, or consumption tax, whatever, is volatile. It's not, you know, it's tied to a recession, so, you know, we've seen it plummet. Like, last year, we trimmed out over a million dollars from our budget, because we knew we were going to have a loss in sales tax after the coronavirus shutdown started. So, it's a lot more volatile on that end than it is with property tax. Nationally, I think I'd rather see, you know, flat tax 17% or, or switch to a VAT, but still kind of at odds over that, I'd rather just have the flat tax. And state, it would have to be a higher than, you know, the 8 and 1/4 it is right now.
And that's high, but you know, but when I write a check for $7,000, $8,000 a year for property taxes.
I know.
You know, to, and, and I hear you loud and clear on it's tied to recessions and stuff, but, you know, and a conversation for another time, is it's like, well, if we're all having to do with less, then I'm okay with the government having to figure out a way to, you're in this with us, you'll have to do with less also, and, but I understand the domino effect that that can cause and all that. So, that's a whole nother conversation, we can, we can get into another time, but I, thank you for your opinion on that. Couple bills, you, you guys have a city council this meeting this week, where it's different House bills and stuff on the, that are coming to you guys. One of them has to do with, it's House Bill 4183, which would allow the city to hold an election to impose a 1 cent per gallon tax on gasoline to be used for street construction, maintenance, and policing. Victoria streets are obviously, you know, we talk about them all the time. Why do Victorians, why do we not feel that progress? You know, we hear that, yes, there's the 2025 Master, or 2050 Master Plan, all, all the plans we hear about, why do we not feel it, though? Like, why, why do my teeth still rattle when I drive down roads? Why can I have to have two lids on my coffee? All that kind of stuff. What's, what's the delay in looking out and feeling like progress is being made?
Well, it's the sheer volume of work that needs to get done, and what we have available to get done. We've been working on a plan going forward for roads, that we have a bunch of debt capacity, because we're paying off bonds early, and taking advantage of that, you know, we're going to have, still have the capacity, but we're being more intentional in our maintenance programs, so instead of rebuilding an entire neighborhood, where maybe two streets are bad and need repair, what can we do, you know, take out a portion of the road where the base is bad, and repair that, and then maybe those other two streets get rebuilt, and then seal coat the rest of them, and make them maintain, so we're not just spending $4 million to do one neighborhood.
Right, right.
But if you take some of the neighborhoods, they're, you know, 10, 20 million. And then some of them, like Tanglewood, Mrs. Scott's been trying to get Tanglewood redone since she got on council. And the problem is, the utilities need to be replaced, so we can't really go do the streets without doing the utilities, but we need that capacity in the utility bond revenue to be able to get the utilities done. And so, there's combinations like that throughout the city, where it makes it difficult.
But it's not you guys sitting up, but what I see a lot of the times is, you guys aren't sitting there picking, well, my buddy lives over in Tanglewood, so, we're going to send this street, you know, it's not done that way, and that's one of the things I'd like to dispel, is, is there's, there's a lot of regulation process, all that, but it's not just you council members sitting up there, and, yeah, let's do this neighborhood, because I live here, or.
That's, that's the feeling that some people have, but in reality, if, a number of years ago, they started doing a survey every summer of all the streets in Texas, all the streets in town, and we'd have an intern come in, and they would go physically grade them all. And we would get, we'd get a report every year, and it's on the website, so you can look it up. Well, this year, we decided to get more technical, and so, we hired this company that has a vehicle, and it shoots radar, or sonar down, so we can see what the base is like.
Wow.
It, it has like 17 cameras on it, so when it travels over the road, it can note potholes, cracks, all that stuff. So, we get a much more detailed scientifically-done report on our roads, and now we can take that data and prioritize based on their rating, what are the worst ones that we need to look at? And that's typically how we've always done, is what are the worst ones, it's just, it was done manually versus now in a more scientific manner. So, it's driving how we get it done, and our only limitation is money.
So, this, this House Bill 4183, you know, my, my conservative side, you know, initially, I just see, well, here's another tax, you know. How crucial, A, are you for or against this? And then, B, if you are for it, how, why? Do you, do you feel this is a crucial step to actually help us close the gap? Or, I guess the fear that a lot of people have is, okay, fine, this one last time, we'll give you this one cent, but goddang it, we better see the roads improve, you know, and the fear from a lot of us is, fine, we okay this, and then it's another tax that we see go out, but we don't feel that return. Do you, where do you stand on?
So, a little history on that, so we have a Legislative Review Committee, this is the first time we've done it. Jan Scott, myself, and Mayor McCoy started it with Thomas Gouche. Joseph Fensalise is now filling in in the mayor pro tem role. And we take legislation that affects municipalities at the state level, and just kind of go through them and talk through them. So, sometimes, you know, this one is on there, and I had some concern when we talked about it, because I was like, another tax, just like you, it's like, I don't know if I, how I feel about that. But when you start reading on it, it gives the ability to go before the voters in a community for them to decide, not the council to decide. So, it's still all in the voters' hands, and it just gives another tool in the toolbox, if you will, to solve some, some problems that you may have.
Got it, got it.
So, for that, for that reason, we don't let anything come out of that committee unless it's unanimous, because why take it to the council if we're already split coming out of the committee? So, it came out unanimous between the three of us to, okay, let's take this to council, and that'll be my discussion points tonight, is that, okay, it doesn't say Victoria's going to do it, but it's a tool if we need it.
Got it, got it. And there was another one, I think we mentioned, House Bill 753, which would prohibit the city from charging more than a 2% franchise fee on solid waste management services. Tell me a little bit of your thoughts on that one.
So, if you read the headline of it, or the, you know, the title, it's, I think it's, it makes sense, right? But if you start looking at impacts on the city's budget, it's going to be 4% of our general fund. We're going to have to make up that money somewhere, and that goes to maintaining roads, fixing roads, we've got big, heavy trucks that do sanitation pickup. And this would be not just there, but the waste company that takes care of the dump. They charge, they get a franchise fee as well, because they're the sole person that runs it for us. And we use that for road maintenance, road construction, about 1.7 million a year. But what I've found, and it started last session in Austin, that they're trying to, seems to me, put more checks on the larger metropolitan areas in Texas, and doing so with some of this legislation that takes it out of the hands of local government, and says what they can and can't do. And so, they're painting with this broad brush stroke to cover the entire state without recognizing that more rural counties, or smaller areas like ours, are greatly impacted. And I've talked to them here recently, just trying to give a suggestion, why don't we take and get the state to do a committee of finance directors from fiscally responsible communities? I said, I would, Mr. Reina, I would ask him to be on it, because, you know, after Hurricane Harvey, we had reserves. Houston got a $50 million check, because they didn't have any reserves, because they don't manage themselves well.
Got a couple, we're getting up on our time limit here, but I got a couple few questions, I want to, a couple of questions I want to squeeze in. As a real estate broker here in town, one of the things that I'm pretty familiar with is house prices, and my humble opinion is they're too high. I think we kind of have an artificially high market here that we get away with because of the geographic location of Victoria, because what are you going to do? Where are you going to go? And, and our prices, when they should have gone down several times, find a way to still go up, and the taxes seem to go right up there and match them. What are your thoughts on the housing markets and the taxes that property owners have to pay, and do you think property owners are overtaxed?
So, I sit on the appraisal district board. It's made up of three members appointed by the school district, one from the county, one from the city, and I think that's it, I think there's just five of us. And just this last meeting, I asked for a report, and hopefully we'll get it soon. If you look, the commercial real estate values have dropped for the last three years, their appraised values, while residences continue to go up, it makes no sense to me. So, I've asked Halliburton to come up with a report to explain why these commercial rates keep going down. And I asked, I said, so take a building, you know, on Navarro that's maybe empty right now, you know, there's one around Buffalo Wild Wings, how would you value that? How would you appraise that? He said that they typically use the income approach, which ties the value of their building to what income they're producing. Well, it's an empty building, he said, so the value's decreased. And I would argue that that shouldn't be how it's done, and I'm not an appraiser by any stretch of the imagination, I just try to apply some. I just try to apply some common sense. It's like, it's still a bricks and mortar structure that sits on Navarro, has parking, concrete parking. The value shouldn't decrease because it's empty. It shouldn't be based on what's in the store. Because at your house or my house, if we lost our job, are they gonna reduce our residential appraised value because we don't have any income anymore?
No.
No, not at all.
We saw the answer after COVID, they're gonna raise it.
Yeah. I encourage everybody, go fight your, your appraised value every year. Make sure you do your homework. I have a spreadsheet that I keep that is my whole neighborhood and it's price per square foot. I, I know everybody's value. I argue from that standpoint, plus, you know, my comps that I can find.
That for another time, because we're, we're getting close on time, but that's something I'd like to address down the road is, is CAD accountability. And because one, it, it's, it feels weird to me that the board, the people that oversee it are the taxing entities that get the money. So that, that kind of feels odd to me and because the appraisal district kind of seems to do what they want, when they want. And, and they, I honestly think they do a very poor job of reporting to the public. I think Halliburton drops the ball all the time. I think his office during this whole COVID thing just completely just, just bombed. Like I, I, to the point where you could never get people on the phone, they weren't ever working. And then when they make an error, we have nobody to turn to. You know, right now I'm dealing with six agents that are taxing on property they don't own. And I'm told, well, just pay it and then you can argue it. Well, no, this is a wrong, but like, no. And, and so when I started pushing the issue, I was told like what, what you just said is, well, I said, who do I go to? And then I looked and I said, so the taxing entities that get the money from is who I have to go to to get, seek resolve are who he answers to, you know? And, and so for, for down the road, you know, I, I just, normally I would never go on and publicly say that, but I just think they've done terrible and, and they don't listen to their community and there's arrogance there.
The structure's set up by the state.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that's where we would need to work the issue if we wanted to change the board. And I'm always about, hey, if we don't like it, we are the government.
Right.
It's not a bureaucracy. It's we the people and we can go change it however we need to. Certainly, you know, my take on it when I'm, I'm in there, I don't necessarily see it as I'm dependent from a city's perspective to make sure we get the most property tax available.
Yes, sir.
I go in there as a taxpayer.
Right.
And that's how I approach city council too. I'm going there as if every dollar that you get from me, it better be judiciously spent. I don't want to be overtaxed.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I wouldn't argue if I was under taxed, but that never seems to be the case.
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
But I would still probably argue that we were under taxed, right? And the state does that through their surveys or they, they come and audit, you know, our community and we're supposed to be within like 5% of what they say we should be at. So there's some pressure from the state always to make that property tax where it needs to be. One other quick thing, when I'm in there, I'm waiting on a report also because I voted against it, but they hired an outside firm to provide sales data. And I think as a Realtor, you might find this interesting. So, you know, as a homeowner or whenever you close a transaction, you don't have to divulge anything. Texas is not a state that you have to provide that information on sales. So appraisal district already gets, by their own admission, all the data that comes out of the closings in Victoria. But there's this other company out there that the state comptroller's office uses that supposedly has additional data. So I want to talk to one of the representatives and I've asked them to be at the next meeting. Please tell me, how do you get this data if it's not allowed to be sent out? And why would we need it if we already have all the data that's available publicly?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I voted against hiring that consulting firm because I couldn't get my answers to my questions and hopefully they'll come in and explain it to me. And, you know, that board is, is very difficult in the fact that it took me a year to figure out kind of what, what's going on? What do we get to control? What are, you know, not control, but what do we get our input on? What are we overseeing? And what are we, because I can't go in there and talk about a specific property. That's against the law because I can't go advocate, say Caleb's house is too high. Why are we doing this to Caleb? You know? So we appoint the ARB members, appraisal review board members. And hopefully through that process, we get some fair minded individuals on there. We can always use more people to volunteer for those.
Right. Well, I'll just, you know, for the record again, I would never normally do it, but I, I think Halliburton's terrible. I think he runs a terrible office. I, I think that just across the board, they're, they're just bad and they're a black eye. You know, I, I think of, of a lot of the good work that you guys do do, I, I think that they're just a, a black eye because he, he's, I think the job's over his head. I don't know what the problem is, but you know, we can go off camera and I can give you lots of reasons why and from the community, not just myself. I think he's terrible. But all that, you have not been, sir, and you have answered all my questions. We got more, but we hit our time limit. What do you see for the future of yourself in Victoria? What do you, where do you see, you know, what would you like to see happen?
Well, Raleigh laid out a good vision, I believe, for everybody. And he set up some of the boards below to head in the same direction. Everybody's ginning the same way right now and it's very, very encouraging. We still have differences. You know, the mayor now sits on the V E D C executive committee, which is a good thing because it's funded mainly by Sales Tax Development Corporation. So Sales Tax Development Corporation president is on there as well and a port representative. So that's people that are contributing to V E D C now get to sit in the executive board meeting and help make some decisions. But I want to see Victoria keep going forward. I think the best way we have for success in town is growing our tax base, right? If we have a good commercial tax base, it helps us a lot. You can see it in other communities like Inez that gets for most of them, you know, and their school district.
Yes, sir.
So I want to continue along those, those routes to keep bolstering our economic development. I think that's, it'd be a shame to, to let some of that effort get away from us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, thank you again so much, you know, for you guys to put yourself out in elections. It's a lot, it's a strain on your family, it's a strain on your, on your health, everything, you know? It's all of that. And again, thank you for sitting down to do this interview. We, we had planned to, to host the debates and we were gonna have them for all the different candidates, but you know, Dr. De La Santos and Mandy Lingle were unwilling to participate. So we, we switched to this. And so I thank you for your time and, and thank you for the time you've already given to this city and served in this city. And, and I know you guys catch a lot of heat and, and all of that, but in the same breath, I, I wouldn't trade spots. Like I, I appreciate and I respect the fact that you're willing to give up your evenings, you're willing to give up that time with your family to go and serve our community. And, and the thing is, is, you know, we can disagree with people, but I still respect and appreciate that you're out there serving and you're giving and you're willing to do this for the community. And so thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. And also to you, I mean, this program and your other program as well, it's a fantastic resource for Victoria.
Thank you.
It takes all of us in serving in, in capacities that they feel called to serve